I said. Yeah. Don't you receive a magazine? Action. Possibly. Definitely. Are you done? Keep worried. I'm coming. That's right. We end the long thing. All right. Six or seven were done. Oh, that was not me. Yes, that's one. Thank you. Yes, it's in one of these. Yes, fine. I'm glad. I did. You know, great. We are. But then. Oh. Ask him. Oh. I wonder about my accent. I had opened it on this.
Remember the same from.
Oh, you are.
Yes, I'm thinking maybe the. My phone might be.
Did.
Dead.
You know. Next to my.
That's fun.
But. So I just. Who's later? Straight. Yes. Oh, great. So we started. See. Oh.
James, do we? Sir?
Yes. And.
Do you have a? We have a call.
Yeah. Online.
Then we have a call. Yep.
Yep, you do.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order July eighteenth, twenty twenty four. It's five P M. We're at Oak Ridge City Hall as a work session, public hearing. Regarding the charter. First order business is pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Counselor Coker.
She is excuse.
Okay, Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Charman.
Here.
Counselor Brewer.
Here.
Mayor Ketchin.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next is item forwards, additions, corrections, adjustments to the agenda. James, anything? Yes, any counselors possibly might have a. Recommendation to change? Okay. Go on to item five, that's public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? And understand this will be. There'll be an opportunity to comment on the specific charter later on in the in the agenda. Any online comments, public comments? Nothing seen. On to item six, and that's. Six point one is public hearing on the proposed revised charter. James or Mr. Chairman, do you have any opening remarks on this second public hearing?
Just to remind folks that this is our second public hearing. And unfortunately, we realize that. Didn't record last one. So. You can step back and explain things. This is very counter at least. Everyone can see that says recording. That last time, too. So, for instance, sort of off this year, last year, did a brief revision on certain works. Just a bit. Well. But I'm going to turn over that and the management committee again, they were two years. Working hundreds of dollars on the vice charter. Thank everyone again. Today. It's tough one. Uh. But yeah, yeah, but. I guess we should go with the schedule again, just real quick. So. Again, we've been we've been receiving all this public comment, either in meetings like this or via email. And reflecting all those Matt has uploaded every time through email onto the website for the new charter. They look though. And then they will take a look at all comments on Monday. That's an issue. There are two emails that I haven't got up yet, that they will be up. So yeah, we got. I'll turn over to you and.
So. Before we actually. Get into the. Public care. So I guess what I want to do is I want to open the public hearing if you're ready, otherwise, if there are more preliminary comments. Are there any where you just want to roll into the public hearing?
We could run straight to the public period, or I could. For the purpose of the recording and purpose of anyone here just briefly. Running through the website again, what's available to.
Yeah, why don't we do that since we don't have a recording the last?
And we will make sure that we are sharing. We can share screen thing properly, I think. Yes. Still.
It's like it's kind of.
Great. Last time my mind worked for the share screen, that'd be a. As. Running off the U S D. Good presentation.
Jackie, can you see the displayed slideshow?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so you can go to charter dot Oak Ridge dot city. And you'll see. Twenty twenty four city of British Charter revision, and this goes through the place the city charter. How does the city charter come to be? How is the city charter revised? Any of these just by hovering your mouse over the. Menu, it pops up, or you can click on it, and you can see highlighted section. Exactly what what was happening to the media residents, that's what you see here. Then. How did the charter committee operate? You have an overview of. The way we went through the existing charter and. The devoted rounding year to going through the existing charter so that we could. Without offering any suggestions at all for the improvements of that charter. Just make sure we all understood what each provision was. And and then to make sure we understood the implications of the provision as it as it was. You. When we were asking clarification questions, make sure we understood what it was. And that wasn't a time to. To sell someone on a particular frame of reference. But as we ask implication questions, if we have a proposal that we might. Have to do it in the back of our minds, we could ask questions to. To suggest some some implications that people might otherwise guess. And but we still weren't offering. Uh. It seems so. And we still weren't offering any. Suggestions on how to improve the. After we went through the entire city charter that way. We then did a second, second round where we we used lead Oregon cities existing charter. Lead Oregon City's model charter. And we compared sections in the lead Oregon City's charter to. Our existing charter and looked at all of the implication questions that we had asked about the existing charter. And. Then went through and. If we generally, if we didn't have good reason, defaulted to the lead Oregon City's model charter, but also made suggestions. Of our own. The. If in the end, in order for a suggestion to be included in the charter. Suggestion here, it had to be consented to by all of the members. So we we kept going back around and around. To make to fine tune what we were proposing for for the city. For people to vote on. And with a mind toward a, can all of us agree? And do we think the citizen, they can agree, you think that this is? We can see here. We we think that it's good enough for now. Which for a charter means years. We think that this proposal is safe enough to try. It's it's helpful, or at least it's benign. And it's possible to implement with integrity as any measures should be for a local government. And that, to the best of our knowledge, the proposal is consistent with the vision and mission of the city of Oak Ridge. Again, the. Vision of Oak Ridge was approved by the city of Oak Ridge Strategic Plan of Oak Ridge, a state. Close knit town nestled in a beautiful cascade, but no surrounded by trails where community isn't just a word, but a way of life. Come on. And the mission of the city of Oak Ridge as well. The city of Oak Ridge is committed to the delivery of effective, courteous, and responsive services. Citizens and employees are treated with fairness, dignity, and respect. Civic employee pride. Are accomplished through constant pursuit of excellence and a workforce that values and reflects the diversity of the official. So this means that one hundred percent of the twenty twenty four city of British Charter has been consented to by a member of the charter review committee. And and as we see it as. As consistent with furthering the vision and mission of city of Oak Ridge. We have values guiding the charter review committee, you see what those values were. And. But to summarize, your transparency of the city government, accountability of the government. Lunchability of the charter so that, hey, it's we can read it. And you'll agree to. Consistency of interpretation, hey, if a phrase could be interpreted different ways, how could we how could we simplify it or make it clearer? And there's there's one instance where our existing charter used. Used a. Awkward phrase with regard to supervision of of the judge. In in the duties of the judge and believing Oregon City's model charter trying to simplify that. And we as the committee said, well, actually, to to make the interpretation entirely consistent. Let us go ahead and just stick with what our existing charter says, because it was it was totally different. So increasing awareness of citizen authority. There are distinct parts of the charter where. And. We we wanted to make citizens aware of what. What's possible with citizen initiatives and referendums and. And then to modify the percentage required. To for citizens to execute a particular kind of initiative or a system referendum. And that is irresponsible to the state constitution that unlike many state constitutions, secures that right initiative. And referendum for for Oak Ridge citizens. And it's also in response to the ramifications of the motor voter law, which effectively change. Change the percentage of. Active. Involved registered voters that you would have to get the signatures of because now there are more people on the rep on the rolls who are. Having registered to vote just just to the city, but just through the. The process of registering, right? So that. That's a was a matter of making clear citizens authority and then increasing consistency with other cities by using the lead Oregon City's model charter when possible. And. You can see. The draft text. And. A- any section of the city charter, as you're looking on this website, you can see the title. And and you'll see each time what has been changed. Why are these changes important? And then the number of the old charter and the new charter. This is true for every single section. If you're curious, say, under powers. How it must have changed under powers of the city. You can read, must have changed. Why are these changes important? What's the old number and what's the new number? So you can go through and you can. This makes it much easier than watching every one of our meetings to understand the rationale behind each of the proposed changes. But nevertheless, the the process that we use does. Does make it where. And. The process we use, it does make it where you can access. And all of the. All the recordings that they are available. Thanks. See where that is. Yeah, so. First two meetings are on the. This this section, by the way, is out of the charter review committee operate. If you see at the bottom, meetings one and two, I can see administrators YouTube channel. And the city of of Oak Ridge YouTube channel has all of our subsequent meetings. So if you want to. Dig in the weeds. Perhaps after having read the summary. You're welcome to do so there. And the public comment period that occurred last time. And. The text is all up here, so you can see the public comments that were made. And. If you access, you can see public comments about the charter and public comments about start voting. And as a way of just letting you all know your public comments are being captured and. So you can say, hey, no, no, that's that's not quite how I intended it. I'll be capturing them one screen if anyone wants to make a public comment. That way you know exactly what's when you go on the website as well, so everyone can see your public comment. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Could you show us on there where to find like the emails that you've received from the last meeting or since then?
Where the the meetings prior to to the last, the emails prior to the last game. And. Are right here, just links from the public comment. So this is the email correspondence and. So. This correspondence was referenced, like I was repeating at the beginning of the first public comment session, and links to council rules added. For further request, and so here is that entire email chain. There only been two emails since then, and they will all be.
And will they still be right there in that same spot?
I will make sure that there, you see how it says public comments down here? I will make sure that all of the emails are either listed separately or linked from one of the public comment.
Okay, thank you.
And then I think important part, show people is just. I'll. Go into charter and join, I think. That's true. So again, when you go to charter dot Oak Ridge dot C, this is what comes up. Here's the draft text right here. Click here and. And. You can see. There's a little navigation tip at the top. Below is the entire text of the post charter. The ordinance referendums on start voting is distinct from the poster, but if you click on the ordinance document, you get that. And. That's the ordinance referendum there. Yeah, oh, well, what is start voting? Click on that. If you get back down on the start voting, this is. Designed to make this. Easy to navigate. Oh, look, there's the public comments again. Right back to, we get all loops around, so it's not necessarily designed for you to. Have a clear sense of where you are on the website at any point, but it's a it's designed to make it where wherever you are, however you're getting there. It's easy to hit. So it's it's easy to stumble your way back across the bridge and access. That's the city of British Garden, again, just. Each each section has its. What has changed? Why is it such a wire? The change is important and how the number is. And in reference to the old charter as well, so. Yes. Yes. I think one thing is also to know, you know, there are some things that were in the old charter that were omitted from the new charter, such as the section on city reporter. The city reporter, you know, it's not mentioned in the in Oregon cities. Standing in the charter. Put that in their chart. Probably send that decision. That's necessary. Were. In the charter. City employee. So. Some of that, I think, does come through, you know, in the comments. Yeah, it it should all come through. So if you look at the section on the vector. It would be the third section regarding. Records. What is changed? Text has been added, text has been added requiring. And in section twenty two from our current charter. Which creates position for a reporter has also been omitted. And and all charter references fifteen and twenty two. Who? Will either. Unless you guys. Go.
Okay, we'll go into the public hearing, declare the public hearing open at. Five twenty two. We'll start with any public comments in favor. The public comments in favor. The public comments in favor. Okay, none seen, none heard. Any comments in opposition? To this charter? Any comments in opposition?
And Jackie, you might need to help us out if anyone's raising their hand, you can't see him on on views, just let us know, you can call him out.
Any comments in opposition? Okay, any comments in general? Any comments in general? Comments in general? Right unseen and heard. You want to take counsel? Questions during public hearing? Do you want to do it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any counselors have comments or questions on the charter of the committee staff? Online, coun- councils online, any questions? In the room? Well, I have a few. And and I think I gave both of you these ahead of time, so they should be no surprise. But I think it's worthy to put it out there so people know what we're what we're thinking here. So under section two point two, and that's the. Construct of the charter. I I was comparing your charter against our existing charter and against the L O C model. And there was discussion about in in two point two, in the L O C model, as to why they put that language in there about being liberally construed. And it was important to me because it really did. Differentiates between home rule and the opposite of that. So I think it's important to have that L O C language in there because we are a home rule state. And it's very important that we sort of make that as clear as possible and give the city as much flexibility. In their charter, if we put that in there, what what are your thoughts on it?
Yeah, section, I have it up on on screen.
Yes.
Section two point two, the charter will be liberally construed so that the city may exercise fully all powers possible under this charter and under the United States and Oregon law. And. The literally construed entails that no mention of a particular power shall be construed to the exclusive jurisdiction of powers that the city have. If the particular power are not mentioned.
Yep.
Since the last, so in the in the previous charter, it had the phrase liberally construed, and it had that. Language, which is entailed in literally.
Sure, sure.
So we we omitted that. That phrase, which is consistent with what lead Oregon City's model charter had. That that the phrasing from the previous charter was not there and there is.
But it was appended. You get you chose to remove some of the L O C model language.
Oh, not.
Yeah. Um. Thanks. So I've got in here in my notes, the charter will be liberally construed, so the city may exercise full, fully all powers possible under this charter, under the United States and Oregon law. Powers of the city under this charter shall be construed liberally in favor of the city, and the specific mention of a. A particular powers in the charter shall not be construed as limiting in any way the general power granted in this article. The charter's interpretation shall be examined on its own, on its. In its entirety. So. Ours doesn't include all that language, and did I get it wrong? Is it set not in the model?
Let me.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that? What you just read shouldn't be in the charter, primary language itself, or as a footnote?
I'd like to mirror what the L O C model. Did. That I I I believe that, you know, I think their footnote is important, and this is their reason. Counselor Ken.
I think so. The little word again, city said that we don't, we wouldn't be putting footnotes in the actual charter.
Right.
That was just to help us get through our meetings, our meetings. But the. Footnotes wouldn't stay in, so we would need to make sure that the language says. What we wanted to say.
I'll have it up soon.
Okay.
So, Mia, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that. We didn't. Our committee didn't keep. All of the original text, nor did we keep all of the links suggested text.
It's it's new text, it's unique text. In the model that I would add up, I pulled off the website same day. It might I had that language in there, if I remember correctly, unless I got that wrong.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull up here. So. Yeah, all all own responsibility for that. Here is the lead Oregon City's model charter. And. Here's that first part that you're reading. Here are the. Next two sentences. And you actually see when I'm highlighting the next two sentences, it's picking up a bunch of those.
Yeah.
And what happened when I went to the chart that we worked off of as a committee?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I have the text of the late Oregon cities. And I have the text that we voted to include as a as a meeting. We voted to include the lead Oregon City's text as we were all seeing it on the chart. So that would have been an oversight.
Okay.
The. There was no discussion on why. Why the. Best of this text on the section should not be included.
Sure.
It was a matter of, well, the league working cities doesn't have this text from.
Right, right.
Our existing charter, we don't see a reason to to put it.
Yeah.
We got that.
Okay. And James, answer one question for me. I I was looking at the agenda bill for the resolution. And there was an asterix comment in there about the city council does not can only make recommended recommendations because it goes to the ballot box. Can you explain that further? Does that mean we cannot make changes to the charter, the 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 draft charter itself, if we don't agree with it?
My understanding is that the city council. Gave this assignment to to the charter committee. Understood it may be in the.
That this was supposed to be, you know, citizen based committee. And councilman recommendations, just like this is. Now, the the new charter shouldn't be written by city council. Come from citizens.
Was there a resolution for the charter review committee?
I don't know how we got this.
I looked for it. I couldn't find it.
Stand by um.
Motion.
By motion, not by resolution.
In doubt, that would have gotten into that level of detail. About who.
Right, unless we pulled up the recording, because the minutes would just be a very short version of what was actually.
So my concern is. If council doesn't agree with what you say. We technically couldn't change two point two, right? This.
Well, I I'm sure that the committee is. Change it. I don't want to make any promises.
So you're saying. So so let me get this right. So city council looks at it, we go through all these comments, and if we have issues with it, we send it back to the committee. And they get to decide whether it goes in or not. Is that the way you envision this working?
That's the way I'm envisioning, because because there's been a million suggestions.
Sure.
And against a lot of them are. In for each other, so obviously.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted to to preserve meetings on. Make that decision, just, you know, if when we explain the process, we explain it is. For resistance and, you know, it's not. City council. All in all shots. I think voters would be a lot comfortable. Only for something, no, no need to.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to get the process down. So we do it. Everyone knows what we're doing, how to do it. Um, so my next question is three point three, and we talked about this a little bit in the first public session. And that's signatories on counter signing checks. Did you have discussion or is that, do you feel like, does the committee want to change any of that language?
We we will be discussing it and uh. I I would be surprised if we weren't changing it uh in order to your to your recommendation.
Yeah, so so what I'm, I guess, so so speaking of, if the committee's going to reconvene and and go through some of this. Then how can we possibly pass the resolution tonight, James?
How you could you could have faith in the the. And also. We most likely need to.
Right.
As in, or or in council, even if it's unanimous in 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 this. Being. We could hold off on doing the second reading.
Yep.
We make sure that all. Right.
Yes, you can.
Um, wouldn't we tonight just be making a recommendation to send it to the attorney for the ballot title?
That is correct. Thank you, thank you.
And so then. Once that's done. All the language is done and comes back to council final final. And that's when the council would have a resolution that says we approved that this would go to the ballot box.
Didn't the attorney be the last one to see it before it comes back to council? Because if you're gonna monkey with the language, you're gonna want him to know that what that language is.
No, he he uh.
We were, we're in a time crunch.
But our finals would go to the attorney to create. A ballot title.
Yes.
Would then come to council. For approval with the full text. As a ballot title.
Yeah, so on Mon- on Monday, the committee will be, that's a public meeting. Welcome to ten. Will make the final changes, then send to the committee.
And then it still comes back to council for. This is, uh, that's when the council. Would do a um. Resolution. To submit this product to the ballot.
Thank you for that clarification. Versus Star Wars. I have put that up for her. Tonight. But it's obviously, you know, it's probably.
Um, the the only additional. Beyond the discussion we had on the first meeting was. I think we had to find a better uh word other than city checks, because. In this day and age, we're we're talking about electronic fund transfers, we're talking about electronic payroll. So we need to have a and and maybe orders of the treasury remains. Maybe that's a, maybe that's a valid. Valid, uh.
Yeah.
It's I know it's crazy because we're all looking at, oh, is that really me?
Yeah, I remember when we, when there was some issue. Definitely end this week term. Yeah, extended true, yeah.
What about financial?
Obligations.
Something.
I had, yeah, maybe the committee can knock it around and see what, is there a better word? You know, I I'm looking through other cities' charters. Most of them don't even address this. It's not even, nothing even exists about the mayor signing on. And it's contained maybe in their. Other procedures.
Right.
Below the charter, but. Any case. Something to think about for the committee. So. Three point five in the rules. The council must by ordinance adopt rules.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I'm capturing your question about uh three point three uh accurately.
Yep.
Uh. What I have is with the charter group may support including the clarification of the section to. A, use a more comprehensive term of checks. And B, ensure that both an elected representative and the city employee would sign the. Better religion.
Yeah, and that's, and the reason I say that the first part about, you know, an elected sign, I think that it's more in spirit of the existing charter. Is the only reason that appears in there is because they want an elected official, the mayor, in this case, to sign. So I think it's important to. At least have an elected official signature on the checks. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, and then three point five, the rules, uh, council must by ordinance adopt rules to govern its meetings. This isn't, that's an administrative thing, and administrative. Issues normally are done by resolution, not by ordinance. So.
Maybe we remember this discussion, this discussion.
I mean, you can do it by.
We thought ordinance, especially the way we've restructured the charter, were now a resolution. We thought ordinance was obviously stronger and we thought that's more appropriate, right?
So this is section three point.
Three point five talks about coun- council rules procedure essentially is what they're.
Uh, yes, uh. Yes, if that was the uh. The the council rules have in the past been adopted.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
By ordinance. That's that's all we're.
Just following the historical, okay. Repoint.
Uh, a concern of that?
No, I just, I I know that, you know. Administrative matters are covered by resolutions. Quasi legal are covered by orders and then uh. Ordinances are part of law, you know. So. Uh, it just, to me, it align better with a resolution, but. If we're happy with an ordinance, we're happy with an ordinance.
Yeah, we had that discussion.
Yeah. Um. The next one is three point six A. So a period of public comment must be allowed at every council and committee meeting other than executive sessions prior to council or committee business. Now, this is already incorporated into our council rules of procedure, which is passed by ordinance. And so I don't know, is it, why are we? Being redundant and also put in the city charter? Are we, are the citizens concerned that we're we're gonna pull a fast one down and have public public comment?
And please, please, yes. Yeah, we thought it was, it was just really important because it's it's. A lot easier to change the ordinance or resolution and it is changed.
No, I wouldn't be surprised if it's contained somewhere in the ORS too, but public meetings law?
It may be, but you know, the ORS may change.
Please.
Sorry, public meetings are does not require that we hear from the citizens, only that we allow them to attend.
Yeah.
So our own rules. Uh, allowing them to speak is.
Alright, so so the committee's uh. Wants to keep it in the charter.
At the uh. These are section again.
That is three point. Six meetings.
Six, okay. Um.
Eight.
So yes, the uh Oregon public meetings law uh does not require uh. Citizen uh period for citizens comment in committee meetings. It does in council meetings. He uh, it's my mistake, no. Yeah.
Uh, it's being allowed to attend.
To attend. The. Uh. And we had. The other uh reason for it for this was prior to council or committee business. Uh, to specify that uh. In some cities, uh, thankfully not this one. The. The entire business citizens would want to comment on.
Yeah.
Gets conducted and then there's a uh perfunctory, oh, by the way, if you could speak up on the business that we just did.
Yeah.
Uh, now you're now, you got here's your chance. So this was a way of, we actually appreciate. What what council has been doing. And to say, hey, let's let's make this uh something that future councils will.
And and in many cities, and I think previously in this city. That first public comment that we had was supposed to be directed to comments of items on the agenda. And the second comment period at the end was comments on anything. But I I think that's kind of gone by the wayside unless the.
Yeah, actually, at the in this city, at one time, maybe six or more years ago. Uh, all public comment was at the end of the meeting. So all the business happened first.
Yep.
So then, uh, when Mayor Pappy Poston came on board. She was the one that implemented the. Uh, items of business at the first one and then. Anything else in the second. A couple of years later, she said, you know. Anybody can say whatever they want, whatever they want.
Yeah. Alright, um, let's see.
It was kind of after the mayor. Versus.
Um, section seven point two, members of commissions and committees. Um. Again, this is redundant because this exact. Statement is look is found in our council rules of procedure. Um. Does the committee feel it's important enough that it takes space in our charter?
You said seven point two?
Seven point two, yes. That's okay.
Uh, I would just point out that many of the items that are in council rules. Came from the charter or from.
But this particular section was never in our charter and it was never in the model charter that LOC provided.
Oh, okay, I haven't seen it yet. What we're. What we're looking at.
It all it says is all members of commissions and committees established by ordinance or resolution may be nominated, may be nominated by any member of the council. And are appointed by the majority of the council. So this is obviously going back to the recent change we made where the council was not happy that uh I was able, I was the only one that who could appoint. Um. Why we need to say it twice? I don't know. We we talked about how the charter should be as simple as possible and 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 as short as possible, but.
It it is a balancing act, but but that's, it's exactly why we decided to include it. Again, because resolutions and ordinances have changed easily by the council.
Yeah.
And the end was a matter that the way that it's framed phrased uh now. Netted the city paying, the city attorney. Or advice on this interpretation. So we we part of this was a. How do we make it legible? So that it's it's clear. What was decided uh. Going forward.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. Moving on to. Seven point one. Uh. Mayor or council vacancy be filled within sixty days by. Appointment by a majority of the remaining council members, the appointee's term of office runs from the appointment until the expiration of the term of office. Of the last person elected to that office. And this contradicts the way we're doing business now. We, it's the next general election is when they're up.
Yeah.
So in ca- in case in point, like Counsel Brewer Brewer is have her her position is up because. Counsel Hooker had to had to resign soon after the election. If it was, we did it by this, she would be good for a four year, three and a half year term. In this case, you know, by our. Rules that we're using, she's up this year. Seven point one.
I fact that our committee um. Made it match to what. We already have in the charter for the terms, like you can finish. You can only stay in an appointed seat, you can only stay in it till the next general election.
Right.
Yeah, it's at the next general.
But look at with the way that reads, it doesn't read that way. So you see what I'm saying?
This says, so the seat of any appointed counselor will also be on the ballot. Pursuant to to section seven point nine for a two year term.
But look at seven point one.
Right.
That is seven.
Okay.
One of the last sentence, but.
Is it, is it?
Can you blow that up and make it where we can see it?
So the one. The seat of any appointed. Counselor will also be on the ballot. Uh, pursuant to section seven point nine for a two year term.
No, I'm looking at actually seven point one zero. I'm sorry.
Oh, seven point one zero, so go go down.
Filling vacancies.
Oh, seven point ten, sorry. Feeling that, okay.
So then that that last sentence in the first paragraph.
The appointee's term of office runs from the appointment until expiration of the term of office. Uh, the last person uh.
Yeah, then.
So one, one of the two has to change.
Yes.
Okay.
Big catch, I think that was, that was just.
It's probably in the LOC.
Case error, because we. We didn't agree to it that way, right?
Correct, no, we was, we was.
Okay, uh, on to nine point three negotiations. So I've got some concerns here, um. My mind and by and and speaking with CIS. Virtually all of the exempt employees. Can and probably should be hired. By a hiring letter, not a contract. And the contract is the employee handbook. So that way the council actually drives most of the. Rules of hiring people and 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 it can't, you can't just, in the, in other words. The way it is now, if you if you let contract, the city administrator can throw anything he wants in there. Least with the, if using the employee handbook, the council has some control. Over. What they, the city administrator can offer. In a, in a hiring letter, so. I think it should be more along the lines of employees should be hired. With a letter of hire, using the employee handbook. Uh, as as the basis. Um, or however that would be worded. If. And then put an exception, if a contract is required. Then it should be approved by the city council.
May capture uh, so.
I think you mentioned given the letter.
Letter of hire, should be an offer, an offer letter essentially is what it is that that outlines what step they're going to be hired at in the pay scale. And. Uh, anything that would be different in the employee handbook. Which should be very little. And, uh, anything that would be different in the employee handbook, which should be very little. Then it should be approved by the city council. But that's, that's really out there. You're going to probably have to discuss that with the committee because it goes. Uh, there's nothing in our current charter that talks about that and nothing in our current. Regulations that says that. It, and you know, my only concern is it, it impinges on the TA's authority as the chief operating officer or chief executive officer, but. Um, if he's hiring underneath. The employee handbook, then I, you know, I think that's. Enough guidance is given to him in the employee handbook.
To the, uh, the way that we had, uh, framed that, as noted in the section nine point three. Uh, that becomes a must by ordinance established guidelines for the constraints upon. Return, uh, on the terms, the city administrator can agree to the negotiating.
And that's what the employee handbook is. That, that is that guidance.
So.
They're hired with a offer of hire, but they, they'll interview, they'll go through the entire process. The CA will generate an offer letter to say you're going to be at step five. On this position and this is the salary which is contained in the handbook. The days of leave that they're authorized are in the handbook. Everything's in the handbook, how much they can carry over, it's very detailed on, on what an employee is, how they're hired. Uh, if there's something unique, whether it be, maybe it's an extremely competitive market or something like that, and there's some sort of a. He's done to attract, you know, to, to incentivize a hire. Then he could put that in the offer letter as long as it's within what's allowed in the. Manual. So maybe he's going to offer him a higher accrual rate because it over time, because it's, you know, at, at six years, your career goes up and. So, so to me, it, it lets the council deliver those constraints on his hiring. Um, but doesn't tie his hands because he has the ability to put him at whatever step he wants on the page art. Which could, could be one of the incentives. I'm, I'm going to bring you in at a five instead of a three or a one. So. To go through the entire contract, have the city attorney review it. City council never gets to see it. And next thing you know, the contracts in place and it's completely. Or in maybe in some cases might exceed the constraints that were placed upon him with the employee handbook.
So, uh, our, part of, uh, what our committee discussed was. The final sentence here, uh, this ordinance must subsequently be followed for new and renewed personnel contracts. So this is along the lines of what you're talking about.
So, so I guess the first part is the concern that it's already, there, it's already one in place.
Right.
The employee handbook, maybe we need to just name it.
Okay.
And then if you want to put something in that maybe the employee handbook will be reviewed by city council every other year, every year, whatever that number is. If you want to do that, we, you know, I think it should be anyway. It's probably written in the employee handbook, but. How often is supposed to be reviewed? And I know the city administrator is actually supposed to propose pay tables every year. To replace the one, the old ones, but in any case, um, maybe just pay back that that you want and see how you want it, yeah.
And, uh. So I, I, I want to make sure I'm understanding. So. We had talked about personnel salary exempt otherwise classified. And. Use the term contract. To be as gentle as possible. You're, uh, I'm understanding that, that, that the word contract is part of that.
Because we, we have an employee manual that serves as a contract, but we also have individuals on staff. That have their own individual contract outside the employee handbook and anything that's. Anything that the employee, uh, the contract overrides the employee handbook. You know what I mean? Right.
Right.
Right, the, the employee handbook. But at least with the employee handbook, the, the council has set some boundaries for, for the hiring, please.
So it's my understanding that the employees who, who actually currently have contracts. Are like department heads. Because they're not able to be a part of the union. And I don't know why they would have been offered. Contracts at any point, but they all do. And so. Isn't it true that with this part? The way that's written right here, moving forward, let's say, uh, Chief Martin moves to Nevada. And we have to get a new chief that maybe that chief wouldn't have a contract.
You'd have a, even a letter of hire.
Be a letter of hire through.
And you, you, you know, and his, his position would be in the pay table. It is. And by step, and you would use that for figure out what his pay should be. And then, you know, everything else applies and leave approval and all that other stuff. So there's no need for the contract. It's just, to me, it's in excess. And it, and it also entitles, it's a legal document, so it entitles the individual to, and the CA to override the employee handbook. And that's our guidance to the staff.
So, Mayor, did we capture your?
I guess I always assume that the. The reason why the departments had, department heads. Had contracts was because maybe position, uh. And the requirements of the position. Might have entitled them to.
It's that, you know, when I first, when I first got here, I thought that and after, when I started rewriting the employee handbook. And worked with the woman at CIS that's the expert on this, she, and then she's like, why are you even writing contracts? It's, it's all here. You, you just have to offer a, a letter of offer, job offer. It details that, anything specific. Pay on that. You don't even need to write the contract, have a contract. Um, if, you know. I guess some individuals, if it's a very competitive position, may insist on a contract. And at that point, you know. That's when I think that the CA should have the ability to do it, but I think if it's an individual contract, we probably need to see it.
Do I can't be a council senior, I guess, uh. I would be willing to bet that the public would be all in favor of not having.
Yeah, and like I said, many cities don't, what happens, you just give them a letter and you're at step five. You're, you're hired in accordance with the employee handbook.
I've never worked for a city. But, uh. I, every job I've had has been off the letter. They usually have the employee handbook stuff, the application and stuff. And I negotiated more vacation or something or changes which were spelled out in off the letter.
Yep.
And then I sign it, and then I have to sign the handbook.
Yep.
Signifying that I've read the employee handbook. So those two things go together as my.
Perfect.
Yep. Contract, but. That's.
Yeah, I can say contract.
It is, but. But, but the contract is the employee handbook, the meat to the contract.
Maybe we'll then discuss this and, I mean, the other options. I just remember he sent you send us.
Okay. We're getting close to the end. Can we go long here or not? Right, so, um. My next comment is, um. Eleven point two reserve powers and Matt, you talked about this. So. You mentioned that. Oregon's a state that already has the ability to. Have initiative or referendums, you know, that, that privilege is given to the citizens. And it's very well lined out in their secretary of state manual on how that happens. And I know your concerns about the motor voting thing, but I, I, I think the existing. Pamphlet that comes from secretary of state relies upon the last gubernatorial. Active people. Active voters which would get rid of those inactive motor voters that you're concerned about.
It's not my understanding for, for the citizen ordinance referendum.
See if I can pull it up here. So, looking at the secretary of state. pamphlet. Talks about required signatures for city elections officials. It does say fifteen percent of voters registered in the city the day the prospective petition is filed for initiatives and then. Ten percent of voters registered in the city the day the prospective petition is filed, so. If that's the case, then why wouldn't we just use what they use instead of setting an artificially low percentage? And just, and use, that way you're using a process that's already in place at the state level in, in, in other forms. And just rely upon the last gubernatorial election of active voters to, to get that. Fifteen percent.
So, uh, this is, uh, you just have to call it.
It's, um. Yes.
Yeah, where, where is that, what are you saying?
I'm on the table on page four called filing requirements. Maybe it's not page four, hang on. Page five.
Uh, yes, I, but I do want to understand for, uh.
In fact, if the percentages, I thought that Matt, you told us that the percentages were based on the amount of registered voters, not on the. People that voted in the prior election.
That, that's my understanding, not based on the stamp, but, but based on.
That, that rule is there for all the other requirements, the ones for county, the ones for district and the ones for. Port of Portland. They all have the asterisks that talks about the last governor's boat. But for the city, there's no asterisks. So maybe we just need to put, you know, to me, we would just incorporate something along those lines into our charter. Instead of having to set this artificially low percentage to get an initiative or referendum.
That would be, that would be another way.
Yeah. And it, and it, what it does, it, it, you know, if you set it's just a straight percentage. All of a sudden you get a very active city and next thing you know, you know, it's really low or you get. More voters that don't participate and then it gets much harder. So. To me, it's, it's great to, to. Focus on the last gubernatorial election because that's who's really, you know, how many voters you got that are really concerned.
What does that word mean that you keep using with a G?
Gubernatorial, the governor's election.
Who then?
Gubernatorial.
Okay.
If you say it fast, you don't get, you don't mispronounce it, so.
Going by that election wasn't off here, would that not change the overall volume?
No, it would go back to the. The last one, which is always on a, you know, on year, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, so just so I'm, uh, understanding the comment, uh, definitely is, uh. The, the city, uh, is the only. Uh, it only allows the state government, uh, in which. It's, it's not lower.
It's not based on, on the last gubernatorial election. The percentage.
The. The art, in terms of artificially low. And the. There is the. Two things, uh, one is that if our city experience is rapid growth. We could actually have a situation in which this number is lower than what we're proposing. Uh, so that's one, a hybrid. Uh, the. The other note is that we, we were intending to lower the number for, uh. For reference. So you're right that if we based it on the gubernatorial election. Or a citizen initiative, other than charters. Uh, but other than the charter revision, that it would be very similar in. Uh, and, and where, where there was that intentional lowering was, uh, was in regard to the revenue. But, uh, we, we could go with, uh, we could look at how. How using the gubernatorial numbers would affect the percentage of the.
Yeah, and. The five percent to other, you know, to, to reject ordinance. So that, what is that? Maybe using the guidelines you have is probably somewhere around seventy five signatures.
Oh, no. We pull up.
Yes, it's a work session. She's public.
I think normally for state valid initiatives, it's a percentage of the vote in the last mayoral election, last.
Well, that's for Eugene. Yeah, this, the secretary of state, it's, it's gubernatorial. Um, for all the others, but the city, that, that's why the cities probably don't have that asterisk so they can establish their own guideline.
Uh, so, uh. For Oak Ridge, uh, ten percent of registered voters would be, uh, two hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Uh, five percent would be, uh. A hundred and fourteen, fifteen percent would be three hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, so. And then when we look at. Definitely higher than seventy five. Still, even, even at the five percent. When we look at the, uh, the effect that, that the voter had. Uh, you should know, let's say, that. The month before motor voter took effect in, uh. Fifty six point five percent of Lake County residents, uh, residents for registered voters. And so fifteen percent thus, then eight point, eight point five percent.
Sure.
By December twenty twenty two, seventy one point three percent of Lake County residents, residents for registered voters. Uh, which meant that effective eight point five percent had now been raised to ten point seven percent.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's, that's what we were attempting to ameliorate for permissions. The, uh. We were also, in addition to ameliorating that permissions, attempting to lower that or prevent.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I fully agree with the referendum initiative system, but if taken to the extreme. It undermines representative government, so why, why even bother having a city council if you're going to do it all yourself? So, I, but. So I but just have the committee look it over and see what they think's the right thing to do. Think, see if I have anything else. I don't think so. No, that was the last, that was it.
Did you also want to bring up uh, the the city administrator responsibility funds?
In the charter? Yes, yeah, I'm trying to remember what my comment was here. Let me see. I didn't see a comment there. I know it looks like I made some.
The lead of Oregon City's model charter has uh. Or. The city manager uh. It claws that uh, and this is one, the one you highlighted, uh, E eleven. That the city uh city manager would delegate duties, thus remaining responsible for the actions of all supporters. Uh, and when we were uh. We were putting together the that section, that was the. A section of the model charter did not uh.
The fact that he would be responsible.
Yeah, yeah, it's on discussion, I guess. It's just so broad the way it's written there. So it's like, you know. Public works, and I'm just choosing on anyone, person that gets arrested for something. Read that broadly, I'm responsible. You know.
Captain ship.
You know, and I I get, I I understand that.
So what are you responsible for that they do? I I guess that's what it's just a hypothetical, you know, a serious question because. How do we determine?
Yeah.
What we're gonna hold you accountable for and what we're not.
Work-related stuff, sure. But that's so broad that it could be. You know, child will be stuck at home. Said everything. So.
So what allows us to hold you accountable? There's no statement at all in there.
There's no statement of what?
There's no statement at all in there about accountability. What allows us to hold you accountable? Your contract?
Contract and and that's like, sir, with the little counsel, you don't even have to give a reason.
Doesn't it say in there that there is city administrators responsible for managing all the spam?
Yes, yes, sir. Ensure all city ordinances, resolutions, contracts are administered and enforced, so.
Yeah.
I was I was just relying upon the team of lawyers that LOC has and maybe there's a reason reason to have it in there. But if the people don't want that, that's fine.
But in answer to that question of. To one love round, you all are accountable. The other ones that we definitely.
Got it. That's all I had. Any more questions before we move on? Close the public session and go into regular session?
We still have that that is actually still in the public hearing.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Okay, anybody, any more on the charter public hearing? Alright, we close the public hearing for six point one on the proposed revised charter and we will open at. Six fourteen, the public hearing on uh, the proposed resolution to send the ballot measure ordinance on star voting. Do the voters.
All right, uh, so Sarah Walker is back with us. Give us some pressure on Star Voting since again, it was not reported last time. We'll have presentation, but not going to show the full presentation yet.
Yes, Sarah, we're we're just compressed for time this time, so.
Yeah, how long?
Ten minutes, five minutes, so yeah, I bet. Yeah.
Okay, so.
It is appropriately shared.
Perfect.
And who has the remote, you do names of the mouse's room. Just confirming, Jackie, you can see this on screen, try start voting?
Yes. I can see it.
What do you want to start?
You just go to full screen, you have to start right there. Yeah, I'll probably skip some of the later stuff, brush some more on the earlier stuff. So, um. I'm Sarah Walsh, I'm the Executive Director of the Equal Vote Coalition. So we're an organ-based but national non-profit, nonprofit. Working on equality in the vote itself. But the idea is that our election should be fair, they should be representative, they should play favorites. We should end up with a nice level playing field where we can get great representation. And I think unanimously in this day and age, people are feeling like we're not as well represented as we'd like to be. Especially at the national state and the larger picture, but the same things are at play in our local elections. And so our local elections present a great opportunity to model better. Solutions and actually be on the forefront of more representative democracy and a better republic. So star voting is a modern voting method that's just designed to be more expressive. For the voter, if you have multiple candidates and you have a more nuanced opinion, you're able to show that. So almost everyone has done in like a five-star rating. To express their level of support for different options and fundamentally star voting is a lot like that. So before you overthink it, I encourage everyone here and online to scan that QR code. Try out star voting. Um, there's a simple little test election on which animal makes the best. Um, dog, cat, snake, rabbit, bird, icon, um. And that can get controversial, just like their politics. So it's a good example. And uh, next slide. So the idea for voting reform is that. Your vote should be just as powerful as mine, no matter who you are, where you live, or more importantly. How many candidates are on our side? That's why, and this really comes down to a good problem in the current choose one voting system. I want to say the current voting method, you for a single office, like mayor, you vote for one candidate. And the candy with the most votes wins. And this system works fantastically if there are only two candidates in the election. In that case, you have a majority for a good winner, always, and. A good representative. But if you have multiple good candidates running against each other at once, let's say you have. A handful of candidates from the good guy faction represented by uh Luke Skywalker, Princess Leia, Yoda, Chewbacca, the friends. Here, um, if they only run this Skywalker, they just put together, but for their strongest front card, who seems the most electable. They win the election easily. But if you let them all run for office and you don't do any gatekeeping of the candidates, all of a sudden you run the risk that these. This majority coalition will split the vote and end up electing something more like Darth Vader. Even if he's only got thirty-one percent, he's opposed by a majority of people. So both major parties have lost the presidency due to this vote splitting thing. And um, more people have heard of the Electoral College. This isn't that, but it's just, it's. Anytime the Electoral College has been controversial, um, vote splitting has actually been. Um, a much more solvable issue that is also at play.
And I, I mean, I think it's especially important for for you on our elections because. Don't have a primary. So, you know, like in this case, if if this was for the mayoral race. You know, that's six candidates running. If you had a primary, this may happen, this this. You know, the one voter would be Darth Vader, and then and then Hans would be the two. Going to the general election, the others, but we don't have it, it's just one shot over.
Right.
Star voting is is. Primary and general line. Because of the two-step process, which you're getting to, I'm sorry.
Saying a point though, so that is one of the reasons we have primaries in the first place to kind of narrow it down and call the herd. Because the system really can't handle more than two. So the more we narrow it down, the more accurate it gets. But unless we're narrowing it down all the way, we're not gonna have super accurate elections. And having more elections than needed, it's a waste of voter time, taxpayer money. And then especially for local elections, um, it really limits the ability to step up and run for office. Um, for working-class people who aren't doing this, that's like, they're not career politicians or independently wealthy, for example. So, next slide, we'll look a little bit more at um. At the Oak Ridge current system. So here in Oak Ridge currently, you have multi-winner elections for your city council seats. So three candidates will be elected at one time generally, and voters can vote for up to three. But they're not able to show their preferences between these candidates. So let's say these are your candidates. And below them, we've got some stars on board representing kind of the five-star rating of how much do you like these candidates relatively? So, for example, my favorite is Princess Leia. I like her, she's my favorite, so five stars. Yoda's fantastic too with four stars, um, Luke, um, Han and Chewbacca, two stars. And so on. Um, but I'm only able to vote for one, and what if I don't think that Princess Leia is electable? Do I vote for her or do I vote for, you know, Luke Skywalker, my third choice, because I think he can win? This is kind of the nundrum that many of us find our thought states with, if we're lucky enough to have choices at all. So unfortunately, the current system, um, for multi-winner and single winner elections. Is well-known in the election science community to be very amiable. Um, it tends to favor polarized candidates. And it can be to unrepresentative winners, especially in more competitive races. So, our is amicable, um, voters in this like multi-winner scenario can get an edge by only voting for their favorite. And not using all three of their votes. That helps their their one favorite and kind of differentiate from the rest of the half. Candidates can get an edge by seeing, by being seen as the most electable. And factions can get an edge by running as a slate with others and then kind of gatekeeping the whole process. Which in the end gives voters less choices. And what we see is that. When voters have candidates on the ballot that they like, that they feel represented by, even if those candidates don't win. Having good options is what inspires a good voter turnout. So it's very uninspiring, you don't have options, and you don't see yourself or what's up there. For many voters. And our turnout here in Oregon, it's not the worst. We actually are a model for the rest of the country in a lot of ways. Electorally, but it can still be better. So that begs the question, what do we want in the voting method? And at the equal vote coalition, we've outlined these kind of five metrics or pillars of a good voting method. So it should be simple, um, you can vote, you can tally, transparent, secure. It should be honest, so it should actually incentivize and reward voters for being an honest, expressive voter. For doing your due diligence and filling out your ballot. Um, it should be expressive enough that you can show your full opinion, if you have any wants opinion. And that's what you need to get accurate results that really reflect the will of the people. Last but not least, a voting method should ensure an equally weighted vote for all. Which means it needs to eliminate that vote splitting scenario that we talked about before and not give anyone an unfair advantage. So at the equal vote coalition, our few voting methods, we do recommend star voting. It's the one that really tops the charts in terms of being well-rounded, um. Accurate, equal, simple, honest, expressive. Um, it's pretty simple to do. So from a voter's perspective, it's like a five-star rating. And you're using that to compare options instead of um, just vote this rating one thing. So instructions are here on the left, give your favorite candidate five stars. So on this ballot, this voter has given Andre the five stars. Um, if your last choice or last choice is zero, or you can leave them blank. So this voter really doesn't like Blake. Um, equal scores are allowed, so this voter gave Carmen and David both four stars. Those are, you know, also really good, just not quite as good as favorite. And you score other candidates as desired. So to finish off. This voter gave Erin one star. She's kind of a lesser evil, but definitely still better than Blake.
If I'm wrong, that is important for others. If you forget to rate someone, your ballot still counts for.
Absolutely. So if you leave somebody blind, um, that counts as no support for that person. The whole rest of your ballot is counted. So the default is no support. And if you want to support a candidate at whatever level you want, just fill out whatever number you can save it as.
Or if the person wanted to just vote for one person, leave all the rest of them blank. Uh, it's a counter.
Absolutely. So that's really the magic of star voting is it's super adaptable. It's really up to the voter how you want to vote depending on your opinion and who's on your ballot. If you're a traditional style person and you don't even want election reform, with star voting, you can just give your favorite five stars. And move on with your day, just like if it was a traditional ballot. But if you want to have a more nuanced opinion, you can show your preferences, five stars, four stars, three stars, two stars, one star. Or five, or one, zero, or however you want. Um, so there's really no way, no wrong way to do it. And this user friendliness is what makes the five-star rating the gold standard in measuring. Very user-friendly and it's very easy, it's very hard to mess up, um, no matter how you do it, your vote will be counted. According to the voter intent. And it's pretty simple to count as well. Um, since star voting is just fundamentally scores, you just add it up in the division. So star voting is counted in two rounds. Um, and star actually stands for score and then automatic round. So that's a handy little acronym that reminds you how it works. Um, the first round is a scoring round. So you add up all the scores for all the candidates across all the ballots. And you find the two highest scoring candidates overall. In this example, we're seeing that Carmen and Blake are two highest scoring candidates. So they advance to the next round. And this next round is an automatic round. So you can think of it kind of like a primary and general election all in one. You don't need to vote again. Um, your ballot already shows which finalists you prefer. And your vote automatically goes to that candidate. So to say that slightly differently, in a round, your ballot counts as one vote for the finalist you prefer. In this example, this voter, um, their favorite was Andre with five stars, if we remember back. But Carmen is their second choice with four stars. And four is more than one, so they clearly prefer Carmen. This would count one vote for Carmen. So ultimately, the star voting, it is just one person, one vote. It accomplishes everything of a primary and a general election, but you don't have to vote again. You've already expressed your nuanced preference. And um, since it is just ultimately one person, one vote, the results look just like. The results of a traditional election. So super familiar here, um, the finalists with the most votes went. So this example, Carmen went with fifty-eight percent of the vote, Blake. So this example, Carmen went with fifty eight percent of the vote, Blake loses with thirty seven percent. And um, some people paying really close attention might notice that some people might have scored Carmen and Blake equal. And that's similar to an inference, and you might have not voted for either of the frontrunners. Um, but in that case, that'd be counted as a vote of equal preference. So if you score both people equally, then you don't have a front run between them, you like both the same.
So going back to the sample value. So you're saying if it was Carmen and David that ended up giving two finalists, you scored them equally. That would.
And be part of that. Exactly. Yeah, so it's kind of like an insane, you're saying. They're both fine. So next slide. Um, so how does multi winner Star Voting work? Great question. It works just like single winner Star Voting. You just repeat the process until all seats have been voted. So it scales really well to the kind of elections where you're finding electing three winners. Um, or, or more. Um, no big deal. Next slide. So for those of you guys who voted in the online election, um, what, we're going to take a closer look at those results just to kind of get a deeper dive on what results might look like under Star Voting. So in our best pet election, not surprisingly, it's turning out that across a number of presentations we've been given, dogs who have emerged as the fear frontrunners as best pet. Um, dogs in the lead with six hundred nine stars, cats got five hundred eighty eight. Bird and rabbit are kind of a distant um, third, fourth, and then fifth place. And then in last place, we've got Typhon with only ninety eight stars. So this is really fabulous because um, one of the kind of ripple effects of adopting Star Voting is you get much better information about how much voters like all the candidates. And that's data that might be useful for voters if they're thinking, you know, oh wow, I didn't think that fish had a, you know, a shot at all, but they're actually not that far behind Pat Dog, you know. Um, sometimes our assumptions about candidate viability, electability are not necessarily reflected. In reality, it's more based on who's raised the most money or, you know, who seems like the most electable. So having real accurate information about what the people think would be valuable in its own right. And for losing candidates, especially, this would be really a game changer for them to know, you know, was my message resonating? Should I throw in the towel? Should I run again? And then again, the automatic runoff is really a lot like a top two general election. The advantage is that for taxpayers, you save a lot of money by not having to run two separate elections. Obviously, here in Oak Ridge for city elections, we are just have a one election system with voting last November and stayed that way. But if this is a model for other places, it could actually streamline elections and save taxpayers a lot of money if this was developed on a bigger scale. And then next slide. Um, so just to summarize what the Star Voting um, part of pilot program would do. Um, if city council does refer this measure to voters, then Oak Ridge will vote on the proposal this November. Um, no public funds will be used and there will be no cost at all to taxpayers. There's a nonprofit funded initiative that would fund me up the funds for the initial implementation expenses. And um, Oak Ridge would again be a model for other places. So that's a huge benefit, no cost at all. Um, the pilot project would go into effect when that funding was spared. And then the next three elections would use Star Voting, so likely that'd be twenty twenty six, twenty twenty eight, twenty thirty. So voters would have three chances, get a feel for it, see if they like it. And at the time of that third election, voters would get to adopt a term and then if desired, to establish Star Voting on a more permanent basis. So you get tied before you buy.
Just to clarify. We understand. So what city council will be deciding at our next meeting is whether or not let the voters decide if they want to press her.
Correct.
But we have the voters. If they want to try.
Yeah, it's, it's quite the citizen led process with the Charter Reform Commission unanimously recommending Star Voting for Oak Ridge. And then to be canceled, has the opportunity to rubber stamp that. And then the voters ultimately have the authority and say, yeah, let's give him a try. Mayor?
Yes, please.
We're in a public hearing, right? I just noticed that this gentleman has scanned that. I wondered if this would be a good time to.
So you about done, Sarah? We can go into that.
Great question. Or a great time for a question.
Well.
Scenario. I'm one Star voting, I serve or block in all of the during what, what one.
You mean like for Princess Leia, you filled out all of the numbers? Um, in that case, so when voters don't follow the instructions perfectly, the standard is the same, but actually the front standard is predetermined voter intent. And in that case, that'd be like, you fill out all five stars in a line, so that would generally be counted as. But that, those types of protocols, um, of how exactly voter intent would be determined and what the expressions would be, would be set in place by Secretary of State um, or the council or.
I just wanted to bring that up because just like if I can tell you this product, the five star product, lock up all five stars.
Right.
Your president says, if this line, he wants to.
Yeah, yeah, in that case, the voter intent is really clear. Um, it gets, it would get more nebulous if somebody filled in like oh one, you know, five. But even if, um, one line of your ballot was unclear, the rest is still counted as. So it's almost impossible to accidentally void your ballot in Star Voting. You must anyway you fill it out and be counted and will be counted for your voter. Yeah. We go back to the, to our, sort of the beginning. And we will be posting this whole slide that online, so, um, yeah, this will be available. Would you open another one?
I just wanted to know clarification question regarding what he asked in the instructions, the symbol instructions. Did it say anywhere that each candidate only, you know, only gets one number?
Um.
Or none?
Yeah, let's pull up that ballot.
Yeah, so we've seen that times.
Yeah. One, so this is really just like a stand tron. And um, there is a clause in the um, referendum that said city council may establish rules as necessary for implementation. So there are details that you guys can specify if desired. But we have a technical specifications resource and a number of other resources um, at your disposal for all of that.
I, I think it's a really good question. But I think that's the answer to, if you have all the symbols for that one way, five, five.
Yeah. Yeah, um, in current elections, the, the way that people can like accidentally mess up their ballot is if you vote for more than one candidate. So you vote for Jill Stein and also Hillary Clinton or something like that. Um, that would be called an overvote and your ballot in the current system would be voided. And Star Voting, it actually prevents those types of voters. You're able to support more than one candidate if you like more than one. So, um, aggregate, we expect it would actually reduce the likelihood of voters overall, which is a huge advantage of Star Voting. And those benefits are even more stark when compared to some of the other alternative voting methods out there that aren't had for the last.
All right, now we'll go into the citizen comment. Any comments in favor of this system? Comments in favor?
Looks good. I don't know, I, I.
Thank you. Any other comments in favor, please?
System. It needs to be changed.
Last chance for comments in favor. Uh, comments opposed? Any comments opposed? Comments opposed? Comments opposed? All right, comments in general? Comments in general? Comments in general?
Um, are we checking, seeing when online has comments?
More time for comments on Star Voting.
I'll just add one Ben. Um, there's a ton of information about Star Voting over at starvoting.org. And if you email invote@equal.vote, we're happy to answer any questions you might have as well.
Thank you. All right, there's no other comments. We'll close the public hearing on Star Voting and looking for a move to adjourn the work session. All right, the work session is adjourned at six forty two. Uh, five minutes, James.
Yeah, we take a minute break. I'm gonna keep the meeting going, but I'm gonna stop the recording and we'll restart the recording. So it's two separate.
Seems the transition to office has disabled my ability to get to my online drive. So do you, question is, do you have another hard copy of the full packet? I can make one? Yes, that's all I need.
I'll be right back.
Thanks, Sarah.
It's awesome.
Hey, um, Matt.